Call our meeting to order if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll tonight, mention that Mrs. Gallion is absent, also Mr. Alexander, and we would like to welcome Dominique, who is our student representative, to the board tonight, and I told Dominique that the crowd was here to celebrate him being here. So, welcome Dominique. And with that, we'll move into our presentation recognition awards.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine, and we're going to start with a student, Diane Diablo, and I would like Mr. Jarenzo and Dr. Ziegler to come forward with a special presentation for this young lady.
It's our great pleasure at the high school to recognize junior Diane Delabio. Our country's finest high school musicians and singers will be converging in a four-day event at the end of this month that coincides with the National Association for Music Educators Conference. Pots Grove junior Diane Delabio has been selected to attend the All-National Honor Ensemble. This honor ensemble is quite simply the Super Bowl for high school music programs across the United States. Diane will travel to Nashville, Tennessee on October 25th for this four-day extravaganza of music featuring the best and brightest musicians and singers our high schools have to offer throughout this great country. And on October 28th Diane will perform at one of country's greatest music venues, the Grand Old Opera in Nashville, Tennessee. Diane has earned this honor by her outstanding performances through both district and state competitions throughout her sophomore year. At each level, students perform competitive pieces that are evaluated on a variety of criteria by music professionals. She is one of 33 students from Pennsylvania who qualified for this great honor. On behalf of the Pots Grove School Board of Directors, the high school music staff and administration, and the teachers, we would like to recognize Diane Delabio on this exceptional accomplishment.
Also this evening, we wanted to take some time, Mrs. Williams is going to come up, the principal from Lower Pots Grove Elementary, and she's going to recognize our elementary student leaders for Pots Grove Elementary School. So, welcome, Mrs. Williams.
Good evening. On behalf of Lower Pots Grove Elementary School, I would like to present our student leadership team for the 2015-2016 school year. This amazing group of fifth graders completed an extensive process to become leaders. Although the opportunity was presented to all fifth graders, this group successfully completed their written application, which included a reference from a staff member as well as a formal interview. Additionally, every student on the team embodies the Falcon Four. Without further ado, Mr. Seiler, our assistant principal, and Mrs. Flanagan, our guidance counselor, will present our leaders. Afterwards, a few leaders will briefly share their goals for the year. Mr. Seiler?
Good evening. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you the 2015-16 student leadership team for Lower Pots Grove Elementary School, Carly Adams. Nicolette Bardesley could not be with us this evening. If you could please hold your applause to the end. Samuel Bumgardner, Madison Blake, Ava Bond, Isabella Confino, Nick DeFrancesco, Dominic Domeno, Benjamin Drago, Taylor Dryden, Lily Garette, Adam Hofstadter, Sean Irvin, Riley Kalada, Jenna Kempes, Madison Kern, Sienna Martinez, Morgan Maxi, Abigail McDonald, Shane Nelson, Kelly Nyheart, Naya Norris, Victoria Palma, Miley Schechterly, Jenna Shay, Ava Sibley, Lea Sire, Chelsea Wazdick, and Sarah Yaccarino could not be with us this evening. Our student leaders would like to tell you a little bit about their program for the year.
The student leadership team will promote school spirit by having a funds-filled Spirit Days. Some examples of Spirit Days are Mitch Max Day, Crazy Hair Day, and my favorite, Blast from the Past. I cannot wait to promote school spirit.
We are also looking forward to organizing school-wide events. Our first event is October 30th. It's mix-it-all day. We're encouraging students to step out of their boundaries and make new friends.
Our team will be doing some community service projects. Some examples of this are doing a food drive and helping the homeless.
As role models in our building, we serve as hosts, hosts to visitors on special visitation days. Throughout the year, we will demonstrate and encourage others to follow the Falcon Four and keep Lower Pots Grove bully-free.
Ladies and gentlemen, the 2015-16 Lower Pots Grove Elementary School Student Leader Team.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you to all the parents who brought their children out tonight. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment section of tonight, and our first public comment will be Mrs. Megan Delena.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here tonight on behalf of the Pots Grove Education Association to present a petition to you that has been signed by our members. It reads, "The undersigned members of PGEA are requesting that the Pots Grove School Board come to the bargaining table with an honest commitment to resolving these contract negotiations fairly for the teachers of the district. You, as a school board members, have the power to make that happen. Stop engaging in verbal warfare and let's spend our time and energy getting back to business as usual and labor peace." As you know, we met again last night with administration about negotiations. We presented another proposal, one that shows both our willingness to work with the district and our flexibility. However, negotiation requires both sides to compromise, not just one side moving towards the other. We ask that you show us that you are willing to step up and compromise as well. So, as you approve raises for the administration tonight, as you do every year, please consider that over 250 teachers in this district have accepted pay freezes, no vertical or horizontal movement, in three of the last five years. In addition, there has been virtually no new money on the schedule in that time. We just want a contract that recognizes that when the district needed our sacrifice, we did. All we want now is we treated fairly in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delena, and thank you to all the teachers who did come out tonight. One thing I just would like to say is that I think I speak for, on behalf of the whole board, when I say we look forward to ending these negotiations soon with an amicable agreement between the district and our teachers' union. We certainly value all of the hard work that you all do, and we want to continue to work towards an agreement. Some of us may have more time to do that than others. Hopefully, we can get this done, and we can do it in a reasonable timeframe as well. So, thank you, Ms. Delena, and thank you to all the teachers for coming out tonight. Thank you. We had another public comment tonight, and that was Ms. Darlene Robinson.
I appreciate "Ms." but I'm a little past that. "Mrs." That's all right. Good evening. My name is Darlene Robinson. I have lived in the Pots Grove community for 18 years. I have two children enrolled in the district, a senior and an eighth grader. They have attended Pots Grove schools since kindergarten. I was the president of the Ringing Rocks PTO for several years. I have been and continue to be a volunteer for the last 13 years. I apologize for reading my remarks, but I wanted to be accurate, make sure I said what I came to say. I'd like to address with you the letter that was sent to me via email dated October 2nd regarding the operating changes and the ongoing teachers' negotiations. Let me start by saying that I felt the letter was in no way meant just to notify me of changes. I believe it was an attempt to sway public opinion against the district teachers, and as far as I am concerned, it panged of bullying. The district takes great pains to claim they do not tolerate bullying in our schools. It certainly looks like it is accepted when it is aimed at our teachers, though. I believe, in part, it was meant to raise the ire of the parents and taxpayers against the teachers. I am sure that it will be claimed that it was not meant that way, but if I, as a parent, took it that way, then I cannot be the only one who felt that way or shared that view. The largest part of the letter is dedicated to the explanation of the work-to-rule action taken by the union. Work to the clock. Isn't the reason that there is a contract with the teachers so that the terms of their employment is upheld by both sides? Plenty of us have been union members or have family members that are or were union members. Do we believe that the union plumber is staying an hour later than his shift because he thinks it would be nice to get the job done faster? Of course, he's not. But with our teachers, it is just expected that they will stay late, come in early, answer emails all day and evening while they teach and while they are at home. The letter certainly made it sound like this is commonplace and should be expected of them. Why? I don't think we expected of the plumber or the carpenter who has a contract. If you are in any way aware of where what goes on in these schools, then you know that the teachers go above and beyond on a daily basis what is spelled out in their contract. Do I think every single teacher is the best employee ever? Of course not. Do I think all are totally dedicated? Probably not. I, just like all of you, have had different jobs. Not every employee is as dedicated as the next, but I can tell you I have never worked as hard as I've seen some of these teachers work or for the amount of hours that they work. I have seen teachers hit, kicked by students. I have seen them buy winter coats for kids who had none when they came to early band practice at the middle school at 7:00 a.m. I have seen them cry over the problems these children face at home. I have seen them pay out of their own pockets on numerous occasions for field trips, school supplies for kids who either couldn't afford it or nobody at home cared enough to send in the money. All while they are buried under mounds of paperwork, red tape, copying page after page because they're on their workbooks in the elementary school anymore. They deal with parents who are emailing all day while they are trying to teach because the district thinks we should be connected at every moment with every social media outlet available to man because it makes you look like you care about the parents. How about you care about the workers in the trenches a little? Our teachers. The teachers are our schools. They are who we interact with. They are who our children spend more hours of the day with than sometimes than we do. They are who we rely on to keep them safe all day. I fully realize that this is about negotiating and money. I have a home and a budget. I realize the need for a new roof, renovations, and updates to a home when necessary. I also know you have to pay the workers. I real-- I'm sorry. Who am I more concerned with as a parent? I'm more concerned with the teacher than I am an administrator. I'm more concerned with the teachers. I am also aware of the need for balance and the amount of monies we are discussing here. I see that the administrators pays on the agenda this evening. In the spirit of teamwork and what's best for the district, are they going to give back or refuse their pay raises? My thought is that most parents in this district are not earning between $150,000 or $180,000 a year. The letter you sent me states, "Our district, which is classified by the state of Pennsylvania as one of the poorest school districts in Montgomery County from a market value and personal income perspective, we are obligated to balance the needs of our taxpayers who fund our public school system." I get this. I get it. Salaries, renovations, budget cuts, taxpayers, I know this is not easy. I don't envy your job on the board. I know it entails a lot. However, it's the job you wanted. You seem to find money for renovations, administrators, when it's time for raises, but not the teachers in years. Why aren't there any board members at these negotiating table? If this is your biggest line item on the budget, why is nobody there? This does not look like a team here at Pots Grove. It looks like us against them. Another idea we try to instill in the children, teamwork. Do I want my taxes raised? Of course, I don't want my taxes raised. But please don't assume that I want everything to be at the expense of our teachers. I believe they are bargaining in good faith, too. They are also taxpayers, parents, and community members. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. One of the reasons that I felt strongly about coming, I'm not at a lot of board meetings, but one of the sort of social media rumors was that the parents didn't support the teachers. So, I have a parent of a seventh grader as well as a third grader, and I can tell you that I undyingly support every one of my teachers that are in this room right now. If it wasn't for them, my children wouldn't have the parenting that they have. My daughter had a bloody nose today that was completely taken care of. I didn't even get a phone call. I knew about it. Everything was done. So, when I hear things like, "Well, the parents don't want to pay extra. We don't want to pay more taxes. We don't want to, you know, make the teachers-- oh, the teachers should have to pay more. They should have to pay more in health insurance. They should have to give more themselves." They give everything. I work for a very large pharmaceutical company. I make a very good wage, and if I didn't, I would have hightailed it out of there into another very large pharmaceutical company. These teachers are not looking at other districts. They're not looking at OJR. They're not looking down at Springfield. They are staying here. They are taking care of our children. And the fact that you are sitting here and not giving them every dollar that they deserve for every minute that they put into our children is absurd. We spend money on iPads. We spend money on, you know, photocopies and administrative-- I don't try to understand your budget, but your budget priority should be the teachers that are making the list for the state and the political nonsense that we have to deal with. The teachers are the ones that are getting your numbers up so that you get the state grants that you want. You are not getting those numbers up. They are getting those numbers up. So, I really need you to understand that this isn't about you versus them. This is about Pots Grove as a district. We need these teachers, and if you don't start giving back and letting them know they're appreciated, as I'm standing here as a parent, and please don't misunderstand that there's not a lot more parents here. A, this wasn't very well communicated. Parents have a lot going on. It is the fall. It is soccer. It is football. It is cheerleading. But I want you to know that on that Facebook media and in the Pots Grove environment, parents care, and we want our teachers to be taken care of. Doesn't mean you guys don't get to get taken care of, too. It can be a teamwork, but you have to make the first step, and I will tell you by 100%, the parents stand behind these teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes from 9:00, 8:00, or 15:00. Motion to second. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
Yes, it wasn't noted on there that I was absent from that meeting.
Without amendment to the meeting minutes, reissue the motion. Can we have another second? All those in favor? Aye. Make a motion that we approve the board minutes from 9:29, 15:00.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, any second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. And with that, we're going to move to our receiving accounts for audit. Mrs. Scrim?
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $5,666,378.94 for October 2015 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the treasury report for October 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Second.
Motion to second. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. And with that, we'll move to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Starting with professional staff, I'm recommending that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
So moved.
Comments, questions?
Yes. I just wanted to speak out on behalf of Ms. Moyer, who's going on a leave of absence and who is terribly ill, and she's been an employee of the district and an involved parent, and I just wanted to give my best wishes to her for her speedy recovery and her return to work as soon as possible.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to supplementals, I recommend that you approve the supplemental items as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the miscellaneous items as submitted.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Aye.
No.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you approve the budget transfers as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to execute an agreement with Deveraux as presented.
Second.
Motion, any second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to purchase 25 Kajit brand Smart Spot 4G LTE devices and wireless access through Verizon as presented.
So moved.
Motion to second. Are there any questions?
Well, not questions so much as I think it would be worthwhile to note, first of all, that the funds for this are coming out of monies that we get from returning used equipment, and it's not going to affect the budget, and that, secondly, this purchase will benefit our economically disadvantaged students who do not have internet access at home and yet need to be able to communicate with their fellow students and teachers beyond the school day, and that these devices will accommodate--
So while I have somewhat mixed feelings about more spending--
So while I have somewhat mixed feelings about spending money on this, given that it's not hitting the budget and that it's benefiting our most needy students, I'm very much in favor of this, and I hope that we all vote for it.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye.
Moving on to the next item, I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed.
So moved.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to education, I recommend that you approve conference attendance as presented.
I'd like to pull out E and H, please.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of A, B, C, D, F, G? Aye. Opposed?
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Dave. I make a motion that we approve E and H under action item education.
So moved.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just, I previously stated that, given our budget need to raise taxes in the previous year, I wouldn't be approving conferences for the administration for the year, and I'm following through on what I said. So, that's why I asked to pull these out, and I will again be voting now.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
I recommend that you approve the mentors as presented.
So moved. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Yeah, let's do that. We're going to recess for a minute, and the board's going to have an executive session for five minutes. Just call the meeting back to order. Board wanted to hold an exec session to discuss the ongoing negotiations, and just at this time, I wanted to ask Mr. Nestor if you could highlight some of the-- highlight parts of the proposal that is on the table with the union for us.
Certainly, Mr. Valentine. At our meeting last evening, we made our prior unofficial proposal, a formal proposal to the bargaining process to the teachers' union. That proposal incorporates step movement in three of the four years of the proposed contract. It adds money on step in two of the four years, and adds money at the top of the scale in every year. The average increase in teacher salary for the four-year period is 2.85% per year in our proposal. We also introduced some important healthcare changes that we need to make in order to comply with the Affordable Care Act because our primary healthcare plan that's being used by the majority of our staff in Pots Grove School District will most likely become a subject to the excise tax. Many people call it the Cadillac Tax.
in relation to the contract that was signed last year, and specifically related to healthcare. We were previously on the 2070-90, I think it's, plan, and in the Springford contract, they, they made it so that you didn't have to change plans, but they certainly disincentivized bargaining unit members from staying in that plan to the benefit of the PC 310 plan, which I believe is on the table. And we stayed on the 2070-90 plan for a year, and then last year, we sat down and we did the math and figured out that the savings for going to the PC 310 plan were pretty substantial in terms of the amount of money that was coming out of my wife's pay every, every month, and in terms of reduction in co-pays for the types of medical services that we use. Example, $28 for urgent care went down to $17, which is something we do five to six times a year. Chiropractic co-pay went down from $25 to $15. We do that between the two of us twice a month, or, so, you know, that was a couple of hundred dollars in savings. The monthly out of our, her paycheck was almost $2,000. And then the downside on the PC 310 is that hospitalization isn't 100% covered, it's 90%. And with an out-of-pocket maximum for an individual of $2,000 and for a family of $4,000, at least as that plan is in Springford. So I figured out that, well, on any given year, I'm probably going to have some out-of-pocket expenses that I didn't previously have, but that they would be offset by the, the savings in co-pays and the savings in, in monthly out go. And I've only done this a year, but I figured out that this past year, we saved about $1,500 out-of-pocket compared with the previous year. Got all the healthcare that we needed, and, and, you know, I figure if I can save $1,500 a year, then in any, any year where I have something major and I have that $2,000 out-of-pocket expense, or even the $4,000, I'm still going to be to the plus. I don't think it's ideal, but in some respects, but in other respects, I'm very happy that I made the move. I made it by choice, and I think it's an excellent plan. When I compare this plan to the plans that I help people get as a recruiter in the business world, there isn't even a close comparison to what people are paying out-of-pocket. My coworkers are insanely jealous of the plan that I have, and I recognize nobody wants to go backwards, but I don't actually see this as going backwards. It's a different plan with different coverage. So I just wanted to give you folks my perspective on it as an actual user of the very plan that is on the table, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinowitz. With that, we're going to move into our budget update from Mr. Nestor.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. It seems awful early to start the budget. We just ended it a couple of meetings ago, it feels like, but seeing as 2016 will be a presidential election year, the primary, the spring primary is moved up until, into late April from the third week in May. So the entire budget process, which is geared towards the potential of seeking a referendum to approve your tax increase, the whole budget process backs up because of the earlier primary election. But there is an exception to participating in the Act One timeline that we've talked about in the past. We haven't used very frequently. We've done it once, I believe. But that is to adopt a resolution committing the district to stay within the Act One index. We've recently gotten our, our Act One index for the year. The base index for every school district in Pennsylvania is 2.4%, meaning that even the wealthiest districts can raise their taxes 2.4%. But because Pots Grove is not as wealthy as some of our neighbors, we get to raise our taxes, the ability to raise our taxes higher if we need to. And Pots Grove's Act One index is 3.1%. So those are the parameters that we're working with for the upcoming budget cycle. Those are the maximums we can apply for. If we, if we decide to follow the Act One timeline, we can, we need to file a preliminary budget in early January. We need to have it adopted probably on the second meeting in January. And at that point in time, we can advertise that we are planning to seek exceptions to the Act One index, which would allow us to raise taxes more than 3.1% if we so choose. Under that scenario, we have to meet all the designated timelines of the Act One system. The other option would be to pass a resolution stating that we'll stay within a 3.1% increase, and then we can, we don't have to follow the Act One timelines at that point in time if the board adopts that resolution. What complicates it, obviously, this year, the, the 800-pound gorilla in the room, is we still don't have a state budget for the current year. So it's very difficult to guess what next year's state budget may be at this point in time. So from a, from a flexibility standpoint, there's value to keeping your options open and waiting to see what, if anything, happens with the state budget this year. But there, there's also the value of not having to rush the, the budget process and get information out that's more accurate on a, on a timely basis rather than meeting the Act One timeline and getting out the best we have at that point. So we don't need to make any, any decisions tonight, but if it's something you, if the, if the resolution is something you want to pursue, I can prepare the resolution for a future board meeting.
When do we have to make this decision? When's the latest?
Based on our regularly scheduled board meetings, I believe it will probably have to be done on December 1st, because I believe the decision needs to be made before our January scheduled board meeting.
Could you confirm that, just?
Yeah.
First of all, I'm not comfortable making this decision before the new board is seated, since they're the ones that are going to have to make the ultimate decisions on, on taxation in the coming year. And for two, I'm also not comfortable making this decision while the state hasn't approved a budget, and there's so much uncertainty. And third, I'm not comfortable making the decision until we know the nature of our agreement, hopefully, with the bargaining unit. So for all those reasons, I don't think we should do this now, and I'd like to do it as late as we can.
I'll verify the date and get, get that out to you. We all, we would always have the option, if we wanted to go later, to schedule an additional meeting or a special meeting in early January, depending on what the timeline is.
Thank you. PSBA board training.
Some time ago, we were having conversation about training for our new board when the board is seated, and I've been working with PSBA to identify what type of training we might want to entertain, and Janet McNally is the Director of Education and Training for PSBA, which is your organization, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and they provide training, a couple hours in an evening, and they were able to identify the date of Thursday, November 12th, which would be after the election, so we would know definitively who the new board members were going to be to come onto the board, but yet we would be able to have some training about main responsibilities of a board, how to work as a team of 10, you know, effective board workmanship and how, and how to conduct ourselves. I went through some of the other things that they, that they provide for us in your weekly update. The training is a $600 expense, and I would need to get that approved now so that we could secure that date that she's holding for us of November 12th, but that would then allow us to work as, as a team of 10 with the new board when, when it's, it's official, but prior to the seating in December.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second. Any questions, comments? The only thing I'll say is that it's very valuable training for new board members. Four years ago, when I first came on the board, there wasn't a training. Matter of fact, I don't think anybody even talked to me between the election and the meeting, so you want to talk about being green. So something I promised that when the new people two years ago came on, that we were, I worked with Ms. Viola to make sure that there was ample training and meetings. I think they were sick of meeting, but it's important, and there's a lot of complex issues that go on back and forth, and learning on the fly is not really healthy. So I think it's a good thing to do, and so is any other comments or questions?
I just had a comment. This training would be for, for everyone that's still coming, staying on the board, so if you could just make sure you mark your calendar for November 12th, should the motion pass, so that everyone could be available that's, that's going to be remaining, remaining board members. And then we will set up another orientation training just for new board members to get further information, like we did last year with, or two years ago.
Right.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment about the, wasn't on the agenda to be voted on, but we are, so we will take public comment on it. Anyone has anything they'd like to say? No? All those in favor? Aye.
We're really excited to have our, our brand-new student board rep, Dominique Johnson, here with us this evening, and he's going to, I had the pleasure of meeting with him this week and having a conversation, getting to know him a little bit, and he's going to tell us a little bit about himself, and then he has a report for you this evening. So welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Viola. Good evening, everyone. As she said, my name is Dominique Johnson. I would be the student body representative on the school board this year. Couple things about me, I'm senior this year, getting pumped for college, I guess. Play baseball, honor student throughout my high school career, and have been in Pots Grove School District since kindergarten. One of the reasons I joined was I thought it was a good opportunity to help better my school in a way, in a way, while also helping me with my speaking skills and presentation skills for the future, for my personal future. My plan for this year is to notify and/or note, or aware, make aware of whatever discussions or events that occur throughout the year, and make sure that everyone who needs to know or wants to know about the events are in fact aware of it. I've read, I have read the school board possibly, and I will abide by it. I will be meeting with the athletic director, Mr. Drenzo, throughout the school year to review events in our schools, such as West Pots Grove Elementary last week welcomed the West End Fire Company for Fire Safety Week, and we'll be starting Title I reading groups this week. Ringing Rocks Elementary also celebrated Fire Prevention Week with firefighters and A, anti-bullying assembly last week. This week, the teachers' PLC focus is on data analysis. Lower Pots Grove last week is moving for, forward with the Golden Ticket Program, which students are recognized for demonstrating Falcon Four, which are respect, responsibility, positive attitude, and being safe. This week, they will have Fall Pictures, which is actually this Thursday. Pots Grove Middle School last week held Unity Day with all sixth-grade student, students and teachers. Unity Day also reinforces the Falcon Four and build community, and build the community to, to prevent bullying. Also, last week, they worked in the classrooms with our Apple Professional Development Coach, Mr. Chris Hyde, and continuing support for our Dial Initiative. This week, they met King Arthur from the Harlem Wizards in preparation for the game on November 4th. Pots Grove High School voted for homecoming and class officers last week. I'm pleased to announce that Nikita Harper will be the senior class president. This week, they are excited about homecoming activities such as the bonfire this Thursday, the homecoming game on Friday, and the homecoming dance this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
One little thing. I wanted to make a comment while the students were still here, but they immediately started moving out, and, and so I didn't get a chance to say that, since the fifth graders are the same age as my youngest child, and because I volunteered for many years in the fifth, in his classrooms, I knew about half of the kids that were standing up there, and I just have to say how proud I am of those kids, that they're stepping up to leadership at such a young age, and, and they're all wonderful kids, the ones I know and the ones that I don't, and, and so maybe the parents will see this on playback, so.
Thank you, Rick. Mrs. Scrim?
Yeah, I just wanted to update everybody at the JOC meeting. We recently had that our numbers now, our enrollment is 569 students, and we do have 18 programs we offer, and out of those numbers, Pots Grove students, we have 175 students that attend there. Again, I can't say enough about the JOC and the kids over there. It's like, one of my favorite things to do is to go over there. I will be promoting their open house on December 3rd. That's for new incoming students and also alumni, some alumni coming back. And just if you have a chance, go on our website and link on to the Western Center and see all the exciting things that are going on. I can't say enough about our students over there, so, and that's all.
Thank you. Any other new business? No? Okay. We didn't have any previous inquiries, and with that, I make a motion that we adjourn. All those in favor? Have a good night, everybody.